Welcome. I'd like to report out that a special meeting did take place with the city council and direction was given to legal counsel. So with that, I'd like to call to order, it's my pleasure to call to order, this joint meeting of the Hillsburg City Council and the Redevelopment Successor Agency. It is February 5th, 2018, and let the record deflect that all five members of the city council are present, and let us begin with the pledge of allegiance. To begin, I'd like to look over the agenda and invite a motion to approve tonight's agenda, but would anyone like to request a change?
Move for approval.
No? Okay, you're gonna move to approve. There you go. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along, may I please have a motion for approval of the minutes? So we have two separate minutes to approve from the city council, December 18th and January 8th.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so moving on, we have announcements, presentations, we have a 10-minute maximum Farm to Pantry update, and we're happy to see you here. So who's here from Farm to Pantry? Thank you, Danny, welcome, I'm so glad you're here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. It's up there now, it's very exciting. Well, we are all here, all our green shirts are here to say thank you so much for... It's okay, you can keep, I can talk while you do that. To say thank you for your continued financial support. The City of Hillsburg Community Benefit Grant has enabled us to take children and teens into the field or into the kitchen for nutrition education. And considering our mission to grow healthy community through healthy food, we're committed to developing and supporting local sustainable programs that provide fresh, affordable food to members of our community. And so by engaging students to do that, they learn the practice of gleaning and participating in food democracy and food justice will increase, leading to a healthier community. What button do I push? Sorry. Probably, yes. So these are some, here we go. Gosh, that was fast, okay. In 2017, we had over 300 students getting their hands dirty in the ground and writing us thank you notes, which I left on the desk there, and some lemons for you, but you can look at those later. We harvested approximately 2,313 pounds of produce that would've gone to waste, which is about 9,250 servings. They harvested radish and lemon and grapefruit and orange and tomatoes and turnips, lettuce, peppers, and that's about it for that year. We delivered this, most of this produce to the pantry, but it also went to 19 different organizations in total. Did I say that was 9,200 servings? Okay, good. So in addition to, most of our field trips are regular every year, we added Westside School this last year, 4th grade came along and they gleaned oranges and we delivered those during the parade. Alexander Valley School, Shannon's here too, a 1st grade teacher of the class that comes with us regularly, several times a year, gleaned 1,050 pounds of oranges and tangerines. We have our annual 2nd grade walnut glean. The students learn how, they learn all different things from their teachers ahead of the glean, but like how our food system works, healthy food choices, and then they have a scavenger hunt basically for walnuts, it's pretty cute because they're tiny, and they learn that the walnuts actually fell to the ground from the tree. And then they get to take them back to school and to the pantry. Most of our field trips get a pantry tour while they're dropping off the produce that they just gleaned. So they learn about the recipients and they get to see all the food that's lining the shelves and how it's all given away for free, and a lot of them say, "Oh, my grandma picks up," or "Yay, I had that yesterday," or something like that. So it's pretty open with their dialogue as far as like who's, you know, they're not afraid to say they pick up at the pantry, and most of the kids that we take gleaning with us are from either the after, and distribute too also, are from the after-school programs and our local public elementary schools. We also take now the high school gleaning with us. They did, they gleaned the Plaza oranges, which is coming up again. And it was raining that day, so we had the cabana up and it didn't last that long, and the oranges are getting taller, so hi, may please trim the trees so that they're lower, if you're here. Let's see, so here's some more photos. They get to eat right off the trees, it's fantastic. And they just have an overall good time out just doing something that they know is going to be benefiting their neighbors. And this class, high school class, they were the senior culinary department of advanced culinary students. They took it back and made all of these crazy things with Adrienne, the chef that was there. They made chili marmalades and they spiced oranges and they processed the lemons and they did all of these great unusual healthy snacks. They also dipped some orange wedges in chocolate and dehydrated some like paste and fruit rollups, things like that. We do nutrition education with kids on campus after they glean at a property at the Hillsburg Living Community. So we are also trying to connect all different demographics and people in our community. Generations of gleaners, mixed with Becoming Independent, also with our students that we take on the field trips. We've got a lot of different age groups and types of population that come with us, and then we do nutrition education as well. That, last year, we made shaved persimmon and pomegranate salad with a citrus dressing, and individually, the kids thought yuck for all the ingredients. Nobody wanted to eat fennel because they don't like black early licorice and persimmons were, they only know the mushy ones, and pomegranates get stuck in their teeth. But by the time the salad was finished, they all took home ingredients for that salad, and it was great. And that was at the Foss Creek 2nd grade kids, so there were a lot of them there. So that was a great thing, and that was the two-week period where we were delivering persimmons, pomegranates and fennel, because we picked like 700 pounds of fennel. So the parents, the recipients at the pantry were getting a lot of those ingredients. So it's nice to teach the kids that and send them home with those ingredients. Here's some pictures, we roasted, we toasted and made raw walnut butter, and they compared the difference on dehydrated pears. They liked both, they both had just a tiny bit of salt, so it wasn't like they loved the saltiness, but some liked the roasted better, it was equal actually. And here's some more, we also do a community canning event in October where the high school seniors or the high school culinary class gets to join us also. So we're doing our community canning events, mixing that with our students as well. And all of these, we doubled our cases of jars this year, and they canned 40 cases of quart jars that all went to the Hillsburg Food Pantry. We collaborate with a lot of different organizations in town, like I said, but here they are, they're on the PowerPoint, but the City of Hillsburg, kids on campus, we're club-age, doesn't have enough staff right now to send their kids out with us because they have to stay, so I'm trying to work on that, that they can come out with us, or maybe the staff is different anyway, so we didn't get them out last year, but that was, that was it. And Hillsburg Elementary, Hillsburg Charter, Fitch Mountain, Alexander Valley School, Becoming Independent, Local Farmers, we made a video of the 4th grade class out at Lou Preston's, that's our, part of our website, and they gleaned so many radishes and they ate them in the field, and it was absolutely just incredible having those kids there. And thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Aren't you glad we gleaned?
Yes, thank you, thank you, it's delightful, it's wonderful and colorful and inspirational and educational, there you go. Do we have any questions? Because I just want to commend you, but I want to make sure if anyone has any question.
Well, thank you, we really appreciate being able to run these field trips because of the money you give us. That's ultimately what we're saying, is thank you very much so we can continue to do these.
Thank you so much for coming and giving us an update and definitely keep on going, it's great.
If anyone has any oranges in the audience, or lemons, or any other vegetables, you can just call Farm to Pantry and we'll come, make an appointment to come and glean those.
Thank you all so much for coming tonight, if you all want to stand up so we can see all that green, it's kind of cool to know, I mean, we can kind of see you through the people, but there you go, thank you for your work. Really appreciate you coming tonight to give us an update, thank you. So again, really inspirational, and I think our fellow council members are going to give a council report now on matters of interest, keeping them short as well, please. So just checking in, anybody want to start? How about Councilman Noyokas?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Two, well, three items of interest, first of all, I attended the state of the county, annual state of the county address, and it was a very interesting, as usual, presentation with Vice Mayor Hagley, who got to sit at the mayor's table well. So the, but one of, there are two things I wanted, two of the highlights from that is, well, one of the highlights was two challenges that the county faces in terms of economic health that are going to come up later in the agenda, which is why I want to mention them now, which is, first, the challenge of finding and keeping and growing the workforce. That's probably one of the biggest challenges for keeping the economy going and healthy. And of course, also number two is housing, which is very much tied to that workforce development and retention. So you know, those two challenges, they were kind of the same issue last year, but now with the fires, they're just that much more poignant. So that was a good presentation. Second, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Zagster program, it was fun. Thank you for leading that charge, Vice Mayor. And then third, a personal note, I exercise the powers vested in me by the State of California to marry my niece, no, well, to officiate.
Counselor, that is not legal in the State of California, I don't know what state we're living in, that is not relevant to...
To officiate at my niece's wedding. And actually had the honor of Uncle Disco doing the DJ, but it was fun, it was a nice touch, one of those nice little perks of our position, and it was very touching. And you know, before my sisters show up, my sister, the family's in town, right? So if you could keep the heckling to a mild roar when they're here, I would appreciate it, and that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Gold?
Well, just to add to the Zagster, which is really great to have in town, I saw on, I think next door Hillsburg, a resident of Parkland Farms saying, "Why don't we have a station out by the entrance to the park?" And I thought, that makes great sense, because somebody who's a visitor or, you know, lives in town could grab a bike, go out and, you know, surrender it there at the entrance, go for a hike, and then grab another bike and go back into town. Or someone from Parkland Farms could grab it to go into town. So I just think it doesn't make a lot of sense as a station location if we're considering expansion.
Thank you. Counselor McCaffrey?
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Hagley?
Thank you. I have a couple things, so on last Monday and Tuesday, I was up at the NCPA Capital Days with our utility director. The key issues that we're kind of focusing on at the state level related to regionalization, fire and transition clean energy, those were kind of the talking points that we were given. We met with both Assemblyman Jim Wood and Senator Mike McGuire, and you know, I have to hand it to our utility director, we were able to go down on the floor, and you've experienced this with Senator McGuire, you have a conversation, and then in the middle of it, he'll go...
Aye.
So he's, you know, he must have two brains working at the same time while he can have the conversation to do this. So anyway, some of the key things that you've heard a lot about, you know, in a fire, being able to shut down the utilities, and that's one of the things that we were kind of just letting the senator and the assemblyman know is, it's not as simply, it's not as simple as just shutting down the utility if there's a spark or something like that, because you have to take into account that, you know, in Hillsburg, our communications went out, you know, so if there's no power, you're kind of stuck. A lot of water pumps, if you go out into the, you know, outside of city limits, you know, really not related to us, but along the lines of shutting down power, it'll shut off wells, sewer, sewer systems, you know, so there's a lot to consider before there's just a knee-jerk reaction, so it's kind of, it was nice to sit there and have these conversations. The Zagster kickoff was a great, perfect day, I mean, February was what, 80 degrees out, a good turnout, demonstrated the bikes and had a lot of people come out, that was great. As Councilmember Noyokas mentioned, I attended the state of the county breakfast on Friday, and the takeaway from Supervisor Gore was, he had these breakout sessions, which was great. After, you know, the presentation, then he had people that could stay a little later, he had a couple different breakout sessions, so I went into the housing one, and the charge that he gave us was, he said, "I don't want to hear about problems, I want to hear about solutions." And sure enough, anything related to, anything government-wise, pretty soon the conversation turns into, "Well, we need 15,000 workers," or "We need this," or "What about materials?" And everything starts to bog down, and it was nice to be able to remind people, "Hey, we need to look for solutions, we need to look at we as government." In this case, I was referencing the county is, "What can you do to get a project shovel-ready?" And then, and then they can worry about, "Okay, now I've got a project that's ready to go, now you can get the workers and look for the materials." But in respect to the county, the focus should be on, what can you do to help the homeowners rebuild? Finally, this just popped up, a quick little shout-out, I saw on my Facebook feed, "Parents' Night Out." Where's Mark sitting way in the back? I didn't even know about this, it popped up, so on Valentine's Day, the community services, they're offering a parents' night out for $20 per kid ages 3 to 10 years old, they're going to babysit, there's food, arts, craft, pizza and a movie, while the parents can go out on the town, I mean, it's a great idea, so I just wanted to commend you on those, thank you. And that's all I have, thank you.
And again, my last couple weeks, I did get to meet with Doyle Heaton regarding the Oaks at Foss Creek subdivision, and got an understanding of what that development's going to look like and the anticipated inclusion area, as well as just the layout of the land out there. So I'm always into ground truth, I like to visit the place as well as hear about it and see it on a screen, so that was good. And then I also met with the Farmers Market Director about some options for next year, and that was a good meeting with Janet, so that was good. And then I just attended the Sonoma County Transportation Authority meeting, which I had to leave early because of our special meeting at 5:00, but I would like to echo what my colleague, what you're saying, Counselor Noyokas, about workforce housing and what's happening and the no jurisdictions that our Supervisor Gore has been saying over and over, and I just want to wake up to that. When I go down to Santa Rosa to work and I see the landscape of disaster, and I realize as an elected, and as a parent and as a citizen, how much responsibility we have to be part of that and to help with housing and to help with worker housing and to help with the people that maybe can't live here, but they have to drive up from Santa Rosa, and now it's even worse in Santa Rosa. So I'm really with you on that report out that she gave, it was real powerful. And again, the Sonoma County Transportation Authority is talking about housing for 55 minutes and what we can do to make sense out of that. My favorite quote, I will give you, is from Mayor Corsi, who says, "We are being asked for leadership and vision." Status quo is not good enough. As leaders, we need to ask for more from our development communities, and I certainly can see that in our own city. We've got to ask more from our development community to help so we can get more workforce housing, so that was inspirational, just happened today, so I'm feeling the energy of that. So that's my report, and we're going to transition now to the consent calendar. So does anyone have a motion about this?
Actually, I believe we have the city manager's report.
Oh, pardon me, city manager, I didn't mean to skip you. City manager report, thank you.
Sure, so we're going to have actually Deb Getzis give a report for the Housing Land Trust on the housing programs which they've been providing for the city.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mansell, city council members, city staff and the community, I am thrilled to be here today. The main reason for my visit, I guess, I feel like this is my second home being here with you, is to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We talked about doing workforce housing in partnership with our developers, I want to say back in 2012, maybe, 11, and we're just wrapping up the 3rd subdivision. So a quick recap, I know we're short on time this evening, but we essentially work with different developers as they come into town and they build our subdivisions, and in each case, the city has done an excellent job with political will and negotiation, it's been such a pleasure to work with the staff and deliver these homes, so I'm going to do a little recap of what those are. The process, you're familiar with it, but essentially there is a process, and the idea is always to replicate. Do something, figure out a system, and then replicate it so that we can move quickly, efficiently, and everybody knows what to expect. So here's a flow chart of essentially how this works. And the nice thing is that because we are essentially, Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County is essentially adjunct staff, I can sit down with any one of the members here in the City of Hillsburg, and we are all singing the same song, and know that there's a step to follow all the way through, and there's a chart. Essentially, the developer donates land to the city, and then the land trust holds it in trust. And so when someone doesn't have to go out there and spend market rate amounts for land, and they can afford to buy the house that sits on that land, it suddenly becomes a lot more affordable to the paycheck. And the process for our homeowner applicants is this, it's a little long, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but what all those little boxes stand for is stewardship. It's scary to apply for a home, it's confusing, there's a lot there. The most important thing that we do is manage hope. It's all about education. So we, for Sonata, had 80 applications for six houses back in 2012, 2013, about 250 as the program got more, people became more aware of it. And we only have so many homes, but every person that puts in an application allows me, as a teacher, full disclosure, I'm a teacher, allows me an opportunity to provide a community service of explaining what it takes to actually qualify for a home, because we are all working together, all of the cities in Sonoma County and the county itself, along with the nonprofits, are trying to make a difference now more than ever. And so this is sort of the step-by-step that we go through with our homeowners. It's a definitely hold, you know, the person's hand who's applying, and if not today, then tomorrow, and how do we prepare for that moment of homeownership? Qualifying information, basically, it's the same type of information that one would collect as a lender to qualify for a mortgage. Instead of qualifying for a mortgage for a market rate house, our homeowners are qualifying for a mortgage for less, because the house is a price to the paychecks. Things that we look at, and this is basically on a big spreadsheet, are the date of the application, the name of the applicant's AMI, and I'll share what that is in a moment, that's area median income, how many people in the houses. And our job is to make sure that the person that's qualified is going to be a successful homeowner. So even though a bank may say, or someone may feel that they can spend 50% of their paycheck on housing, we understand that the cost of housing isn't just principal and interest, it's property taxes, it's hazard insurance, all of that is part of the education. So we have a lender who works with us and understands that with the city, there are sort of limits as to how much someone should spend on housing, and then we also look at the total debt, and so that again is part of the process. It says down payment, one of the things that is helpful to our families is that there is no down payment required by Fannie, and what we do require are closing costs. And in some cases, the county, for example, just awarded us $100,000 for closing costs in one of our projects in Padaluma, so we try to work with CaliChafe, the county and the cities for additional funding. But, let's see, the last thing that you probably see is an asterisk, live or work in the city, so along with the standard qualifying information, a city can decide if they want to have a preference for first responders, for SSU in Roanoke Park, for people who live or work here, et cetera. This is the AMI chart I was referring to before. So each city will say, "We are going to serve families, households," I should say more correctly, "households, who earn within a certain income level." And then we look at what that income is based on this chart that comes out every year from the state, and the state puts out the chart for each county in California, this is for Sonoma, and the amount of a mortgage is specific to each one of those bands. It's a little complicated, but at the end of the day, the point is to make the home affordable to that particular household. So housing our workforce means that it's all about the paycheck. It doesn't matter if the market is hot, it doesn't matter if the market is cold, it doesn't matter what the stock market is doing. What matters is that our teachers, our healthcare workers, our first responders make a certain amount of money, and that buys you a certain amount of house, a certain amount of mortgage that you can qualify for. We are focused on two things. One is making sure that the price of the home is tied to the affordability and that this is tied forever in perpetuity. And we are also looking at the land as a community asset. So we're setting aside land in perpetuity, just like you would set aside parkland for the benefit of the community, the land underneath each one of the 16 homes we have here in Hillsburg will be held in trust forever for one single use, and that is for the house that sits on top of it, to serve someone in that particular income level forever. And the person who is living in that home has had the opportunity to stop renting, start owning and build equity, and it's a little bit of a paid-forward type of model. You live, work and own a home here, and you're paying down a mortgage and building equity, and then you sell to someone that's in the same income level that you were in, and you get to capture the appreciation. So it's a way to bridge the gap between renting and market rate. And then the next person can qualify, and this goes on forever. So so far, we've had 16 affordable homes here in Hillsburg I'm talking about, at three subdivisions, Sonata in 2013, Sorrento Square in 2016 to 18, almost done with that last house here, and Chiquita Grove in 2017. We've got some of our homeowners here tonight, thank you for being here. And all of the homes are affordable in perpetuity, there's no loans, there's no seconds, there's no thirds, everyone just has a fixed 30-year mortgage, and it's the same, simple, simple. We have six homes at Sonata, I'm not going to get into all the details since we don't have a lot of time, that was in partnership with D.R. Horton, these are some of our wonderful families, and also fourth-generation families, a mail carrier, I could go on forever with stories, but I won't tonight, you can call me. Six at Sorrento Square, and these are some of our homeowners at Sorrento Square. I will say about this slide though, these are first responders, one of our police officers and one of our firefighters, and they are amazing people, and I was in touch with them throughout the time that we were fighting the fires, and it was really incredible that they took the time to check in with me, because I was in touch with all of our homeowners, helping to explain if you need to evacuate, what to do, what papers to take. One of my first-time homebuyers said, "What is important, what does that mean, important papers?" So that's part of the education too, and these guys were amazing. And more folks over at Sorrento. Chiquita Grove is just completed, and the two homeowners that are here today are from Chiquita Grove, we have four townhomes there, a little bit smaller, and so we have families that are able to qualify for two bedrooms, which is great. This is under construction at Chiquita Grove, and these are our families, I'd say thank you. I want to point out the nurse, Alice, on the lower left-hand corner, she was going to be here to say a few words and say thank you, and she's had a family emergency, and it's quite a grave thing. In the middle of all that, she has been texting me up until five minutes ago, please, please, please tell the council and the city, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please, please, please tell the council and the city, thank you, thank you, thank you. So the focus is not on how many homes, but making an investment once into the home. And then how many families can we house? So in some of our homes, we've had a one-time investment and the fourth family is living there. And each family has moved on with equity and the next family has moved in without additional subsidy. So it's simple. It's, we don't need to invest any funds. We get the land from the developer and we steward it for you and it just keeps going. So we're protecting the public investment. We eliminate the need for government and private subsidies in future years as the units are resold. We tie the subsidy to the unit, not the family. We don't give loans to people. We just write down the price forever. It's in the dirt essentially. And we're maintaining income targeted workforce housing stock. We're creating community wealth and personal wealth while maintaining future affordability. So it's a balance. We've got some challenges, of course. Number one, there aren't enough units for as many people as need housing now more than ever. Our low-income households are more likely to qualify than very low. The debt to income ratio is sometimes too high. Part of that is that someone may have used their credit to buy a car because they thought, I'm so far off from buying a home. And in some cases, someone may qualify and we've offered a home and they don't necessarily want a 30-year loan to be tied to that. What can we do? We can work with the city. And the number one thing that we can do is more education. If our employers know that this program is out there, I can't tell you how many teachers we've housed just because in the staff room, there was a flyer that said, call Housing Land Trust. So what are we accomplishing? We're making homeownership a reality for our workforce. We're strengthening the fabric of our community. We're investing in a permanent subsidy that's going to help generation after generation. We delivered stewardship to families. This is very important. We're always in touch with our families every month. We are extended family and we are adjunct staff. So we bridge that. And we're creating community wealth in perpetuity by preserving land that is a finite resource that will benefit the community forever. And I just want to give the city manager a shout out because we've been working on this for very many years. And as much work as everyone is doing, the city of Hillsburg, you guys produce. And on behalf of the families, our board and Housing Land Trust, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you, thank you, thank you. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for coming. It's always nice to hear about the program. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So something that I've never really understood when we talk about average income, like on the chart that you showed, it said for two people, it was like $62,000 and for a household of four people, it was more like $84,000. But aren't two of those people children? How does that, how do they get that?
That's, that's, the state of California puts out that chart. And essentially, it is a household. So that family of two could also be an adult and a child. So it's not necessarily two adults. It's just a number of people in that household.
So it just works out that way? That the households that have more people manage to make more money to feed them, I guess?
It depends. I mean, you know, the chart goes all the way down to eight people. And it starts with a household of one. So, you know, it just depends upon your analysis of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Real quick, this program is predicated on new development. So, and I know that you have some existing examples of being able to use this on existing housing stock.
Yes.
Can you kind of talk about that?
Sure. So I mentioned resales. We've had, for example, we've had 15 resales and in one, in two cases, one-time investment has turned over four times. That started with a new house. It doesn't have to start that way. We have existing homes in our affordable housing stock in every city because cities have been providing affordable housing for a long time. So one of the things that we can do is when a home comes up for resale, we can have that home go into the land trust. That would require completing whatever, understanding and contracts the city has with the seller of that home. And then at the close of escrow, bifurcating that land in that house. And the land trust would qualify a family in an income level that can afford that home tied to the paycheck. The land would go into trust and the resale formula going forward would be based on income. It would not be based on any loan repayment or 10 years or 15 years or 45 years or 55 years. It would be in perpetuity. And that honestly is one of the best uses of the land trust program because we don't have concrete, people to pour concrete. I can tell you this from experience. We don't have framers. We all know. So if we can preserve what we have, then that is really the most sustainable way of doing this, of creating housing. Is create it for, keep it forever.
I want to thank you for coming. I'm definitely going to be calling you because I have so many questions, but I'm not going to stay too much on this. But thank you so much for giving us an overview of this program. And when do we start our contract with Housing Land Trust in Hillsburg? Do you know which year?
When, oh, I think.
When did we start?
Yeah, we have 16 houses, right?
We started, we started in 2014.
So 2014 says 16 houses. Have we had any sales in any of those houses? Has there been any movement?
We haven't had any resales because people haven't really been in there that long.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Usually it's five to seven years, just like a market rate home generally, the turnover.
And have you ever dealt with rental property in the Housing Land Trust?
We are an ownership-based mission, working families to own homes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you from our families, from all of our hearts.
Yeah, you're, thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, yeah, I definitely got enthusiastic a minute ago. I skipped over a very important agenda item. Not only the city manager report, which is our Housing Land Trust, but also public comments on non-agenda items. So let me invite anyone here to speak regarding matters of general interest that are not on tonight's agenda but related to city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, we're not allowed to consider any issues or take any action. But you do have three minutes. That's what we're hoping you will limit your statements or comments or questions to three minutes maximum. I don't know if the paper's there to sign in names or not. Is that happening still? Okay, thank you, city clerk. So if you want to sign in, it's nice to know your name and your address, if you'll give it to us. But for sure, state your name and we welcome you to public comments. So welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Todd Everett and Mayor Mansell and fellow council members, it's a pleasure to be here. I wanted to keep you informed on the progress of the Sustainable Design Assessment Team, ESTAT as we call it, and as you know it, that the progress that the Steering Committee is making. At this moment, we have 28 people on the Steering Committee working to make the ESTAT a real success. And we plan to reach out into the community to increase public awareness and interest. And we expect a lot of people to contribute to the success of the event by working with one of the work groups which we have formed. Our approach is to work openly and collaboratively and to be really inclusive. Our next meeting is this next Thursday at 5 o'clock over at the Senior Center. And anybody who's interested is welcome to come and observe. Our meetings are open to the public. And I want to report that the AIA has selected a team leader who will be coming to Hillsburg with two AIA staff members in March or April. They're working out the dates and going to give us some dates that work for them for a preliminary visit. They want to have conversations with the cross-section of our community and with some city staff and officials. And we'll coordinate closely with you when we know more about the specifics. After they come, they're going to discuss the focus. They're going to get into the details of the event. And then we're going to enter into a memorandum of understanding with them. Typically, the ESTAT is held six to eight weeks after the preliminary visit. As we proposed in the application, which you all saw, we're hoping that they're going to be here for a three-day event in May, mid-May or June. It probably is more likely June. And most of the work that we'll be working on will be from the time after their preliminary visit because we'll have a much better sense of what they need and where the focus is going to be for our community. So I just wanted to give you that update. Thank you so much for your support. And we look forward to visioning our future together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Todd. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Janet Seale. I'm the manager of the Hillsburg Farmers Market. I think all you guys know me. I assume a lot of people in the room know me. I'm here today to talk about this year for the Farmers Market. As you all know, we do Saturday, 8:30 to noon, May through November. And that's been very successful. Unfortunately, the Wednesday market, which we did this past year and which we've dumped for a number of years, has not been. In fact, we closed it a month early. We lost a lot of vendors, lost customers. It was not good and we've decided to close it permanently. We really want to have a second market. And our vision is to have it on the plaza. We know parking challenges, all this drama, it's hard. But our vision is to do it Tuesday mornings on the plaza. It would lead into the music. So we would open at nine, close at one. And then the music people could come on in and get set up. And we would even welcome some of the food vendors who are doing the music series and they could set up for the whole day so they could be part of the market. And then it would all just sort of weave right in. You know, the farmers, we have to realize here in Hillsburg, as we've kind of gotten into wine and wealth and all the beautiful things that are happening in this town, we're, we need to emphasize what we come from, which is agriculture. And this area is amazing. You know, we're a very unusual market. 90% of our growers are with, from within 20 miles of this market. And that is really unusual. If you go to any other market in the Bay Area, that is not the case. We have something very special. And I feel like we need to make it important. And making it important is really putting it at the center of town. So that's my proposal. I think there might be some other people here from the market who might want to just chime in. And I would like to see it go on the agenda and like to make it happen. So Tuesday mornings on the plaza, nine to one, June through September is what we're looking at. Thank you so much. And thank you very much for your support. I know you guys are amazing. You come to the market. We love you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Janet. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the rest of the city council. My name is Tim Preston. I represent Preston Farm and Winery on the board of the Hillsburg Farmers Market. One of the things that I think is really important about the market is not just the history of agriculture that we represent, the local farmers, but also it's a way of really providing good, local, nutritious and sustainable food to members of our community. One of the problems that we found with the midweek market is it being tucked away off to the side in the cherry parking lot is that people just really aren't aware of it. I speak to many people in the, in this, the city. I tried to be an ambassador for the market and everybody says, what mid, what market? What midweek market? It's just not seen. I really think that if we can move it to a place where it would be more visible, hopefully we could get more people in. And really, I think the main thrust of the market should be is feeding people in town, not being an attraction. And I think the midweek market could really do that, especially if we can open it up, open up the market match dollars and the, and the food stamp, it's not called food stamps anymore, but I can't remember what it's called, part of the program to some members of our community that can take advantage of it and get really good nutritious locally grown produce. And I'm trying to make it, I think being on the plaza would make it more visible and more inclusive to everybody. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Ray Voight. And I don't know if this is necessary, but I'd just like to make the formal request of putting the ban or the repeal of ordinance 1058 on the public agenda and open it for public comment. And in case anybody knows, ordinance 1058 is the banning of medical marijuana dispensaries.
Thank you. Welcome, Vern.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. First off, I want to say that I've always been a Philadelphia Eagles fan. I want to thank, on a serious note, I want to thank the council for all their service to our community because they really care. And certainly all the staff, city manager's office and all the, all the department heads and all the members of the city because everybody in the city cares. And every now and then, somebody gets to come up with a concern and get their three minutes of fame like I do tonight. I have a little bit of a concern about this letter I received from the, from the city council regarding the survey of Measure V. I've spoken up about Measure V since it was passed in 2012 and probably been to every, every meeting and participated in every survey except I think one survey I failed to return. My concern is, is some of the language in the survey. I think it can be a little bit misleading. I've sent all of you a letter, an email, and I copied the city manager and the fire chief in that email. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read that real fast if I have my three minutes for the record. Honorable council members, I'm running today concerning the language that continues to be published in the survey for Measure V funds. For the past several years, the survey has stated that city's police and fire department staffing levels are currently at the appropriate level for minimum staffing for our city. I remain silent on, silent on this for the last few years and when I see that language, hoping that something will change. I feel I need to speak up at this point. The city does not have appropriate staffing for the fire department, is my belief. It is wrong and misleading that the city council continue to send this statement out to the citizens of the city. The public needs to know an accurate picture of what the staffing is and what it should be, not presented with language that is not quite factual. When you state that police and fire are appropriately staffed on the survey, people reading it, why would they put anything next to that column if everybody, everybody's okay in public safety? If the city is telling them that they are appropriately staffed, they'll probably just put those suggestions somewhere else. And one of the reports that I read from the city in the archives approved by the city council in 2009 and 2010 that references a study done in 1989, the city would need to hire an additional six to eight full-time firefighters by 2015 based on a call volume of 1,471 calls. In 2017 alone, there was over 1,800 calls. Around 2011, Division Chief Steve Adams was promoted to fire chief due to the impacts of revenue from the economy. That position is still vacant today, the division chief position. I feel strongly that council needs to be aware of their own studies and what they've approved and adopted in the past and as it relates to appropriate staffing for the fire department. What has been approved and adopted by the council needs to be captured in the survey language that is sent out to the public. On a historical note, I went back to our fire historian in this city, Chief Bob Taylor. The city council actually passed an ordinance in 1936 establishing the minimum staffing for the city of two people. Today, the minimum staffing in the city, 2018, is two people. Certainly, a lot has changed during that period of time, 70, 70-plus years. The 2017, 2018 council goals are efficient. They state efficient and effective government. To me, the current staffing level is not efficient and effective. When you read the survey, in my mind.
Vern, can you wrap up?
I'm wrapping up.
Thank you.
I'll wrap up.
Yeah. Thank you. We did read, we did get emails.
A recent example, though, real quick, is the Ken Smoke Fire a couple of weeks ago. The first engine company only had two people on it. So I would hope that the council would take this into consideration and when they're doing their Measure V study, obviously, this is a bigger issue than just Measure V funding, but it's the language in the survey that I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. I'm Lou Preston. We have a farm in Dry Creek Valley and I've been on the board of the Farmers Market. And this is the beginning of a family dynasty here. So I want to tell you a story. My family, when I was young, oh, so long ago, had a dairy south of town. And we lived on the property on East Side Road. And we had a house there. And my mother hired a groundskeeper to take care of the landscaping. But when nobody was looking, he would plant Bermuda onions behind the hedge. They were big, beautiful, red, incredible onions. So when it was time to harvest those onions in June or whenever and they were dried, old Frank McLean, who was our groundskeeper, loaded them up in the trunk of his old post-war Buick. It was a three-hauler, that Buick. And he would drive them to town and he would park in front of the office café. And he would park in front of the Office Cafe on Healdsburg Avenue. He would open up the trunk to that car, and townsfolk would pour out of the stores, the offices, and of course, the bars, gather around his Buick. And within a very short amount of time, that trunk full of onions was gone. Now, we are currently vending our onions in an off-the-plaza, hidden-away spot. And we all, very sadly, can sit there all afternoon with our few onions, and nobody comes to buy them because nobody knows we're there. So what I'm appealing to you is to place on the agenda and support us as having a Farmers Market on the plaza where old Frank McLean has his Buick so that we can be seen and we can be successful and herald the heritage of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight want to speak on a non-agenda item? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Rosie Fabian Sherman Street. I would like to suggest, or I'm questioning, the timing of the city council for three minutes. That was happening for a time. And I'm curious as to why that's not been continued. If we're asking the public to speak for three minutes, I think it's only fair to limit you as well on your comments. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, welcome.
Hi, I'm Mark McMullin, Parkland Farms. I would just like to speak in support of the Farmers Market coming back to Tuesdays. I love the Farmers Market. I think it would be great if it was more closer to the afternoon or when the concert is, because that's when there's more people there. And getting there at nine o'clock in the morning, I don't know that I'll be able to do that. But more toward the concert when I'm there on Tuesday would be better for me and possibly more people for the people in the Farmers Market. So anyway, just supporting them on Tuesday. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for speaking up and staying in the timeframe. All right. So now we're moving to consent calendar.
Move to approve this consent calendar?
Second.
All those in favor?
Roll.
Oh, roll call, pardon me.
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Nayokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hagley?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
Yes. Okay, so that clearly passes. And now we don't have any public hearings. So we're now at an old business item. And this is the Community Housing Committee Work Plan Update and Recommendation to Adopt the Revised Housing Action Plan. So we're going to be welcoming our planner, senior planner, Ms. Lisa Krantz. So welcome and thank you for being here. It's good to see you.
So good afternoon, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As indicated, this item is to provide you an update on the activities of the Community Housing Committee as well as to consider adoption of the Housing Action Plan. So the recommended actions before you this evening are two. One is to receive that update regarding the Community Housing Committee's work plan as well as to adopt by resolution a revised Housing Action Plan. So we'll start out with the update on the CHC's work plan. And we'll start by way of background. And before I do that, I do want to note that we have two members of the Community Housing Committee in our audience this evening, Deborah Kravitz and Bruce Abramson, unless anyone else is... Thank you for being here. So the Community Housing Committee was first established in 2015. And its charge was to address the need for workforce and affordable housing in the city of Healdsburg. And this committee hosted numerous public meetings and helped to develop the Housing Action Plan, which was adopted in July of 2016. So the current Community Housing Committee was appointed in 2017. And the resolution that established it outlined five distinct work items that are on your slide. The first two priority items were to update the Housing Action Plan to reflect the existing growth management program remaining in place and to review the growth management ordinance policies and procedures to ensure that those align with city housing objectives. And then the remaining three secondary work plan focus items of the CHC were to update the inclusionary housing ordinance, to also assess how additional affordable housing can be developed in the community by reviewing potential funding sources as well as potential incentives to increase affordable housing in the community, as well as to review the accessory dwelling unit requirements that are currently in place to encourage that housing type. So what I'd like to do first this evening is to go over those last four bullet points and then come back to the Housing Action Plan. So as noted, one of the committee's charges is to review the growth management ordinance policies and procedures to align with housing objectives. So the committee has delved right in and discussed the existing policies and procedures as one of their first orders of business on this particular item. The policies and procedures implement the 2000 ballot measure, which limits residential permits to an average of 30 per year and no more than 90 in a three-year period. So the policies and procedures outline how residential allocations are granted. And very basically, they provide two categories, Category A, Category B. And A are issued at the building permit issuance for projects of four or fewer units. And Category B are reserved for larger projects. Annually, there are 10 allocated to A, 20 to B under the current policies and procedures. And affordable units and accessory dwelling units are exempt from growth management limits. So the Community Housing Committee's focus has been on how the policies and procedures can help to achieve our local housing goals. So there's been interest expressed in maximizing the flexibility within the bounds of the growth management ordinance to try to achieve targeted housing. And discussion also of how housing priorities could be established and achieved through the growth management ordinance policies and procedures. So the committee's conclusions to date, very briefly, are to retain Categories A and B, as we just discussed, but to alter the mix to 15A and 75B allocations over the three-year period instead of the current situation where we have 30A and 60B. And this is based on past permitting, which has shown few instances where Category A permits have gone more than five units per year. Additionally, the committee is interested in allowing 90 allocations that are available over that three-year period to basically be available in year one of the cycle. So no maximum allocation. And this situation would result in, still result in, no more than 30 units per year average over that three-year period. In addition, the committee is suggesting prioritization of eligibility for allocations by housing type. And those housing types that are identified particularly in the Housing Action Plan. And by priority, those are listed here. So including multifamily rental units with smaller units, middle-income units, which are units that would be available to people who make between 121 and 160% of area median income, as was described to you by Dev in a prior presentation. The middle-income units would include both potentially price-restricted middle-income units as well as units with no agreement. And moving on to single-family units with accessory dwelling units, some that could be restricted for local preference, others that would have no restriction, and then single-family units. So in addition, the committee is looking towards potential prioritization for projects that would have a mix of housing types included in them at the maximum allowed density or exceeding, excuse me, the inclusionary housing requirement as well to try to issue those growth management allocations. So the idea is to require the first priorities, multifamily and middle-income housing, potentially in the first year of the three-year cycle with other housing types made available in future years, the year two and three of the cycle. So staff is analyzing the implementation of the committee's suggestions to date. And we'll be going back to the committee next Monday and talking further about this item. So you'll be hearing more in the future. One of the other charges of the committee is to update the inclusionary housing ordinance to ensure that it is meeting housing objectives in the community. Inclusionary housing programs generally require residential projects to provide a percentage of their total project units affordable to lower-income households. Here in Healdsburg, that basic requirement is 15% total project units onsite for lower-income households. So to date, the committee has had an introduction to inclusionary housing very generally. And this included a focus on the main components of inclusionary housing programs, which oftentimes include onsite provision of affordable units. Fee-based programs is another option. There are some other options as allowed in our code as well for the provision of affordable units off a project site, dedication of land. We're also looking at the applicability of the inclusionary housing provisions to what projects would this apply, is what I'm trying to say, and affordability levels and the percent requirements. All those things are being discussed currently. And so that discussion will also continue at the next CHC meeting on Monday. There are two other work plan tasks that we are waiting, talking about, excuse me, until we finish some of these other items. Those include a focus on funding options, what options might be available to increase funding to be available for affordable housing, such as in lieu fees, local taxes, new state funding. We also are going to be looking at a commercial linkage fee and incentives as well, including density bonus and other sorts of incentives that might help to spur the development of affordable housing. And then lastly, the accessory dwelling unit regulations will be reviewed. So moving on to the Housing Action Plan. Again, by way of background, the Housing Action Plan was adopted in July of 2016. It was the culmination of a public process that started with revision to the city's housing element. And the Housing Action Plan was designed to work with the proposed November 2016 ballot initiative to the city's growth management ordinance. And this measure, Measure R, did not pass, which then necessitated revision to the Housing Action Plan. So as we've discussed, a new Community Housing Committee was appointed, and work began on the Housing Action Plan, its first work priority after two introductory meetings of the committee in the summer of 2017. So the Housing Action Plan timeframe is through the year 2022, which corresponds to the housing element cycle as well. It contains four main components, the first of which is the Housing Action Plan vision. As you can see here, that in 2022, Healdsburg is a diverse, thriving community evidenced by a wide variety of housing, both type and price. Individuals at all life stages and all economic levels participate in active, welcoming neighborhoods, which together make up our larger community. Next is objectives and targets. And these are, these five objectives are listed in the Housing Action Plan with those numerical targets that are in parentheses here. So those include increasing the number of deed-restricted affordable housing, encouraging the development of accessory dwelling units, developing middle-income housing, encouraging appropriately scaled multifamily units, so it has a focus on some of the LARP, excuse me, smaller units, 850 square feet or less, and encouraging development of mixed product types and creative density. The HAP also contains priority and secondary recommendations to help achieve those objectives. And then implementation and evaluation, which includes completion timeframes as well as regular reporting to the city council on progress. So moving now to the Revised Housing Action Plan that has been recommended to you this evening by the Community Housing Committee. It retains most of the July 2016 Housing Action Plan. The vision, objectives, and targets in particular remain the same. There are some changes to priority recommendations, though, to reflect the current growth management system remaining in place. So those priority recommendations include updating the policies and procedures of the growth management ordinance rather than the ordinance itself. It deletes reference to the Transitional Growth Regulation Tool, since this was tied to the ballot measure. It incorporates middle income or proposes to incorporate middle income into other policy documents such as the Land Use Code. It also recommends revision of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance to optimize affordable housing. And it deletes the reference to 30%. So instead, it's just providing options in the revision to the IHO. And it also calls for evaluating revision to impact fees to scale with unit size. So some of the other changes to the Housing Action Plan include new information, basically, since adoption in 2016. So that would include things like additional narrative in the plan where we had previously referenced an approved project, which is now under construction. So we're just kind of bringing things up to date to match the current situation. And then implementation dates have also been revised. Due to the need to revise the HAP, some of the implementation dates have also shifted. So again, the recommended action this evening is to receive the update regarding the Community Housing Committee's work plan and adopt by resolution the Revised Housing Action Plan. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, so what I thought we'd do is just, as usual, take clarifying questions from the council and then open it to the public, and then we can come back and make our comments, if that's okay? So does anyone have any questions?
Well, I, you know, I made a comment earlier today to David, and I just checked the document. It looks like you already revised it. So you revised it this afternoon? Because I'm looking at, that's pretty amazing.
I did not have a chance to talk to Lisa about our discussion, so...
She's not in here now, though.
That may have already been addressed in the original document.
Do you want to share what it was? I'm kind of curious now.
On page...
See, I can't get into my, I can't get into my packet electronically. So I need to see a copy of the current document. Does anyone give me that? Thank you.
Yes.
Page four of the HAP.
It's a little tattered, but anyway. So we'll give you a minute. Is that okay?
If you go under Urban Update Growth Management Ordinance Policies and Procedures, if you go down to the bottom, there is a sentence that states Measure R, which was crafted to provide greater flexibility in the growth management ordinance, was not passed by the voters in 2016. So the existing program remains in effect. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, that was a phrase that bothered me because it's not true. It states that Measure R was crafted to provide greater flexibility in growth management ordinance. And I wish that that had been true because then it probably would have passed. But actually, Measure R revoked the growth management ordinance, which is quite different. So I wouldn't want future readers of this document to be misled to think that we had tried to modify the GMO and had failed because actually, we failed to try. It's quite different. So I wouldn't want them to think that the voters had been given a modified growth management ordinance and had refused it, because that isn't what happened. And I still think that that's something that could happen if we did craft something that was, would give the voters greater assurance that it would generate the kind of housing that the city needs. So...
Thank you for listening. That was clarifying. Thank you.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I mean, anytime you have something written, you want it to reflect. And I know there's subjectiveness in some ways, but just to make sure the history, that's one...
Well, yeah, but anyway, it didn't provide flexibility. It revoked it. So that's quite different. And we want it to have the record straight.
Well, with the council's acceptance, I would work with the city manager to devise appropriate language...
Thank you.
How does the city council feel about...
Replace this.
Yeah, it could either be deleted or just replaced to reflect something that's, you know, more accurate.
City manager, is that...
Absolutely.
Is that good?
And the other thing I noticed when you listed the participants, a couple of people had their name listed twice that are on the...
Abramson's twice.
And so is Lyle Dahl. They're both names are on there twice. So... So anyway, that's just a little correction.
So I appreciate that, and we will make sure that we correct, you know, any of those things or editorial comments as we prepare the final version. We have had some formatting challenges as we've gone through this process.
Thank you so much. Is there any, are there any other questions up here regarding the document? Any clarifying questions or anything? Okay, all right, we will open this to the public, Ben. We'd love to open this to the public. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments? You're welcome to come to the podium. Thank you, welcome.
Jim Winston, Healdsburg. Just briefly, the one thing that stands out, you know, in my mind is the willingness by the Community Housing Committee and certain members of staff to try to allow all of the 90 development permits to be given out all in one year. I think that's really unfair and really problematic. What it would do is it would not allow anybody else for three years to get a permit to build. I think that's totally unreasonable. So what this is proposing is that in any one-year cycle, they can issue 90 building permits in one year, and nobody else gets any for three. That's just wrong. And it kind of, it allows for much bigger projects, because you could conceivably have 90 allocations going for one project in the first year. So that, to me, seems really out of scale for our small town. I'd like to see smaller projects scattered out, you know, around through, through the city. And I would put a huge emphasis on multifamily rental units. Those should have a huge priority. And I think anything short of that, we're going in the wrong direction. So having said that, please consider not to embrace or approve allowing 90 allocations to be given in any one-year period. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to give public comment regarding the report? Okay, so I'm going to close public comment. That's what's happening here, okay? All right, coming back to the dais here. So I just want to make an opening comment and say that how much I appreciate you taking this task on, Senior Planner Krantz. It's dear to all of us, housing and this issue of the HAP. It was the part that I think no matter where you stood on R, the HAP worked for all of us. We wanted to have an aspirational document that reflected the values of getting more diversity and not having the same product over and over. So just want to thank you for your work, and before we start making specific comments, and thank you so much for showing up tonight to let us give you some comments. So who has a comment or just anything before we go forward? We heard from the public, I don't know if you have a comment on that, or invite you to speak, please.
So I was just sitting here, and I opine to Councilmember Gold that this is like a flashback of a year ago. And I know that the Housing Committee has done some great work, and it's also been kind of fraught with some delays and things like that over the, over the year. So I'm really happy to see the Housing Action Plan finally cleaned up and moving forward. And looking at these items on here, I think they all look reasonable to me, and they all operate within the, you know, within the confines of the ordinance that are limiting our growth. And I think that the Housing Committee's come up with some good recommendations on what to, what kind of housing to focus on and use the policies and procedures around the GMO to the, to the best of their ability without, of course, violating them, which is not possible. And I think that it makes it flexible enough that we can, we can make the best with what we have. I think there's also a lot of other things that are coming up that were outlined in the report. There are things that we've, we had discussions about, you know, a year ago as well, right? Like the accessory dwelling units. I think having an ordinance and having some kind of a, a plan to incentivize those even better. I know that right now, we have one in place that's because of the fires that happened, that there is, as incentivized as you can almost possibly get. But also looking at a program where those kind of units can potentially be put into an affordable deed-restricted affordable program was something that I was hoping the Housing Committee would, would look at, and it sounds like they are going to be doing that as well. The other thing was the, you know, looking at the broad kind of scope of, you know, how do we develop other affordable housing? You know, I think Vice Mayor Hagley brought up a really good point in our discussion with Dev from the Housing Land Trust about, you know, they're usually, they usually use their program only when it's initially built, and then it's turned over to the Housing Land Trust program. But Vice Mayor Hagley had the fine idea of doing something like we did with 810 Center Street, where we were able to purchase a property with eight existing units on it and, and preserve that, you know? So I'm really looking forward to the Housing Committee getting involved in that as well. And then also the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. I think that that's something that, while we are limited with what we can do to, with the, with the market and kind of, you know, the 15%, and we have our, our current Inclusionary Ordinance, and it's kind of set up in a certain way, you know, they also talked about the missing middle in here. And I think that's something that we talked about for the last four or five years, trying to figure that out. And so I think there's some opportunities out there for the Housing Committee to, to look at as well, and so I'm excited to have them kind of delve into that. So I think that there's a lot of things that, coming up, that I see on this work plan, and I'm in favor of updating the Housing Action Plan as it's written, and I look forward to the further work of the Housing Committee.
Does anyone else like to make a comment? Councillor Neokas?
Yeah, I think I'm in, I'm in agreement about letting the, accepting the HAP as is. I think what I look at, what, what makes me think is regarding the, the HAP itself and the work plan of the CHC, I want to throw out an idea to the council that perhaps we revisit the, the task of the ADU evaluations and, and maybe, because that, so, so I look at a lot of the, I think that when we originally convened the CHC, one of the real primary purposes, at least from, from, from my perspective, the real big value of the CHC was kind of being that, that, that think tank, you know, the place where, where ideas can be formulated and bounced around, and, you know, so kind of like out of the box, out of the box thinking, right? To achieve interesting objectives, right? And challenge, to address these, these challenges. I look at ADUs and the, and the revising the impact fee schedule for ADUs. I, I look at that as being very much inside-the-box thinking, and really, we've, we've got a box, and, you know, what can we do to make, to work within that, those specifics to really kind of revise that and streamline the, the development of ADUs? And I'm looking in particular the way, the, where it comes in the, in the priority. They've got a lot of other stuff ahead of them, which I think is important from a, from a think-tank perspective, that we, I'd like to get that feedback on. Frankly, I think, I kind of, I would feel, I'd like to get your input on pulling back the ADU component back to us and go, going back to, say, the planning, to the staff and planning commission, to recommend specific, you know, deliberate, in-the-box changes that we can, that we can implement right now to encourage greater ADUs, a greater adoption of ADUs. I'm curious what you think.
You want to comment on that?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think you have a great point there, and I think that, in a way, we kind of already did that, and it was done for us in October. And that's when the state came out and said, well, first of all, first the state came and said that you can, you can make your ADU policies different, and they changed the bar. And then there was the whole declaration of emergency with the housing, and so we had the garage conversions without an extra parking space. And so we, we have that in that respect. But I would, I would be interested in, you know, what I, where I thought you were going with that was kind of repositioning the priority of the Housing Committee to look at ADUs next. I remember when we talked this, about this a year ago, we talked about going over the Housing Action Plan for the Housing Committee to kind of get their sea legs, and then to be able to come back and get into more of the kind of out-of-the-box, you know, think-tank kind of operations. So I would be, I mean, I would be in favor of, you know, this item that we're talking about is receiving an update regarding the Community Housing Work Plan and then adopting a resolution on the Housing Action Plan. I would certainly be up for making the ADU discussion, bringing that to the front now that the, potentially the, the Housing Action Plan is, you know, about to be hopefully approved.
Mayor Mansell, if I can interject. I, I think it's important to understand that right now, we are using the existing ordinances in place when it comes to inclusionary housing and the current policies and procedures that are in place with regards to the GMO allocations. If council wishes to approve the Housing Action Plan, those two things need to evolve with the, with the change of the Housing Action, with the adoption of the Housing Action Plan. My concern would be if we delay implementation of the IHO and the, and changing the GMO policies and procedures, we're, we're going to be at a disadvantage, the city would be at a disadvantage when development comes into town, because they will be looking at the existing GMO policies and procedures and the existing inclusionary housing requirement, which is 15%, and we all know it, well, some of us know what the policies are. So I would just caution council, if we do want to change those, I would suggest that if you do do that, then you allow staff to proceed with those, with the IHO and the GMO. I'm not suggesting that's a good idea just because of the work that the CHC has done to date, but I would just caution council by switching those up, because we do need to get those changes in place relatively as quickly as possible. I'll look at them as Krantz, just because as development occurs, we want to have those new policies in place.
Okay, so I just want to check in before we ask other people to speak, if that's okay? I just wanted to check in with you. Are you getting this feedback okay? Is this making sense, what we're saying? I know you're probably just taking notes, but...
Taking notes, yes.
Because you've been overseeing this, and we haven't heard anything about community housing for a while, so, I mean, I haven't gone to the meetings, I haven't listened, so I'm just hoping that it's all, so you're getting good feedback. Okay, just checking in, because you're...
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so did you have something else to add? Or we're going to go on to...
No, I really, yeah, no.
Okay, all right. Councillor Gold.
Well, I'm certainly ready to approve the Housing Action Plan tonight. It seems like a good, solid plan, very good objectives, and I really want to express my gratitude to the members of the committee to take on this issue, which is such a thorny one, and yet one that's so important to us as individuals and as a city. I feel that, you know, Healdsburg has a certain image as a luxury, high-end destination, and that's kind of going to be what developers are going to tend to go to in making plans for our city. And we know that isn't what we need, and we need to maintain our diversity by, by being able to have, you know, some affordability, so a diverse group of people can, can live and contribute to our, our town. So I think the, the goals are very good, and I'm very happy to proceed with them, and I wish that the housing, that the committee, I wish them a lot of luck, and that I'll be really happy to hear about what ideas they come up for us.
Eric?
Just a couple of comments. Yeah, I agree, I think we move forward with the Housing Action Plan. As far as the, the continuing task for the CHC, in terms of priority, I think stick with the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. I think that is important with what, you know, different things are coming down the pipeline to get that one wrapped up. And then moving to the ADU discussion, I think prioritize that. In terms of funding options and incentives, there's still some other avenues that, you know, exploring in other areas. I, I think that one could be moved down a little bit. I think it's more important to have the, the programs and the, and the, the plans in place, and then we can have discussions about funding. I want to make sure that those elements are in place. Councilmember McCaffrey mentioned, so one of the things that I want to kind of bring up, he'd mentioned the, the deed-restricted housing, and everything about the Housing Action Plan is predicated on development, future development, us getting the inclusionary housing, the affordable housing, the deed restriction, all of that. And I think we also, at the same time, need to be looking at what we can do now. Any new development is subject to scrutiny, you know, the, the process, which is what every development should go through, the public vetting process. But there are, I feel like there are some things that we can do now, and what I'd like to do is explore the concept of trying to, trying to get a program for Healdsburg, a Silent Second program that a lot of other cities have done, and so I think this is something that, you know, if I get support from the council level to maybe just have staff do a quick kind of draft, you know, they could base it on the Housing Trust of Silicon Valley, and they have different, different programs that I think might mirror what we have here. And what I would like to suggest is maybe it's, it's a program that we can help, if we can establish this program, we can discuss the funding part later, but if we can establish the program, then it is something that potentially we could set in motion right away, where it's not tied to, I want to try to untether some of these goals that we're achieving, that we want to achieve. I want to try to untether that from future development, see what we can do to help people get into houses now, help the teachers, the firefighters, whatever we can. And the, what I've explored so far on a Silent Second program, it doesn't trigger PMI, Premium Mortgage Insurance, for people that are going out to just buy a house. And so there are a lot of things that I think, at the staff level, that can be explored, come back, and then that could be something that, that we, you know, maybe send out to the CHC to, to review. I do think that, you know, although I'm thinking of other things to send to the CHC, I think we do need to look at, there is an end date to the CHC. We want this to be a, a group that hears your tasks, you accomplished, you accomplished it, thank you very much. And I think we should be aware of that, that there's a lot of time and money that goes into the meetings and the staff time and everything else. So if there's support, that's one thing I would like to talk about, is maybe have them explore a Silent Second program based on what other community, communities are do, doing that is tailored for us here. So those are my two things. Thank you.
Yeah, a complex issue to come into, and I mirror what, what Councillor McCaffrey said, being a member of the Community Housing Committee and going through R, which was probably the most painful time in my life, not just because of the November election with a presidential election, but it was just a horrible time in my life. I want, I want that on record. I do think that what I really want to clarify is the game rules. And what I have a hard time with when I look at action plans as a lesson plan or a teacher is the targets and the measurement of those targets, and how you know if you actually are achieving those targets. So as it is now, in the growth management ordinance or the language of it, it suggests that every year, we hear from our building planning director an annual report to include the number of dwelling allocations issued during the prior year, the number of dwelling allocations reserved. I don't know the game rules, I don't, I don't pay attention to it, I haven't since I got off the committee, but I'm hoping the committee is getting those numbers, because I still am not clear how this, by adopting this tonight, because I thought we already had a HAP already adopted, but if we adopt this tonight or, you know, go through with this, how are allocations currently being distributed, and how is this going to affect them? So I know that your next meeting, there's an agenda item for you to talk about, Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, and whether or not we're going to change that, because maybe 15% isn't enough to say that's what we're dreaming for. Because remember, the whole reason we're doing this is to bring more affordable workforce housing. That was the impetus for the Community Housing Committee. It wasn't to build more big houses for people. It wasn't about that. I mean, and I, I can show that to you, if you want to go back and look at the vision. It was, it was not, we don't need any more single-family homes. So I would echo, I hope my fellow councillors hear this and... So I would echo, I hope my fellow councillors hear this and we heard it from public comment, multifamily units, that's what we want. So I really appreciate the B category being prioritized, at least that's how I understood it, that you're going to put more out. As far as using all 90 of them with a public comment, I'm not sure how I feel about that either, but there's this clause in here and I combed through this as much as I could because I was fascinated to get back into it, the ministry, I can say this, ministerial method versus the discretionary method. So we have a building planning director and we have a city manager and the system is that the developers, and I've been paying attention to this because I know all the developments that are now happening in our city, I've been keeping track because it's fascinating to hear after fire just how much money people have to spend to make all these things happen. And what I find curious is the game and how you game it. So I don't even know, as a council member, the mayor of the town, how many allocations there are right now, does my city, or does my community housing committee know that? What is the game right now? How many more do we have? What is, what is the possibility for us to use them? How do we attract developers that want to mirror these HAP principles? You know, that was the big thing we talked about two years ago. So what's in the queue now, is my question. So I've been doing my own work on that, trying to figure it out. What's actually trying to get built in Healdsburg right now and does it mirror the values of the HAP? What can we do as a council to improve our numbers of affordable houses for workforce housing? And we can bring up the, this, the connotative language and say for teachers and for nurses and for the first responders, all that everybody's on board for, but then we just don't get enough of those, those buildings, those rentals. And so I'm really curious if we do adopt this, if we're ever going to have a, a way to get an update as we're supposed to, and I think we can, city manager, I'm hoping we can, where we hear from our building planning director or whoever wants to take this on, maybe it's another person, but without a building planning, not a building planning, a director of housing, I'm just wondering, maybe we'll have that solved later in this meeting, but I just feel like we need to know more about what we actually are dealing with, what we have left and what we can do to, to really make sure that we're using our allocations the most effective way. Because the game is really on to use them the most effective way so we can actually do the good work that this whole thing started with, which was take the Green Housing Committee and make it the Community Housing Committee and now we're going to do, you know, do this, this thing about housing, which is when I came on board. So I'm forward, moving forward, but I just want to make sure that's on record, that I want a report to the council pretty soon, maybe by March, I'll ask for that, that helps me as a person that has to oversee things like what is actually the status of our growth management ordinance allocations and what's on the, what's in the queue and who's going to get them and why are they going to get them? And if it's a minister approach, not discretionary, then I want to know what the values are and how certain buildings get selected and certain ones don't, or certain developments, okay? And that's kind of what I need and I had to-
Sure, so I could answer the, the, as far as, we, we have an annual report which typically takes place, that second meeting in March, first meeting in April, we'll have that information available to you again. We have those numbers in real time, Planning and Building Director, she has a copy of those, not copy of those, but she has that information at all times, so when someone comes into the CDC, we know exactly what's available and exactly what, what the status of those are. So we, we know those in real time at all time, I'll defer to Ms. Krantz with regards to what information the CHC has.
The CHC has received information on permitting since the year 2000, since growth management came into being in Healdsburg. So they have information on category A and category B and how that has bumped up or not against the limits, what units were affordable units or accessory dwelling units and therefore were exempt from the growth management limitations. And I just want to point out also that your, your, the council's adoption of the housing action plan tonight will just continue the CHC's discussion of the growth management ordinance policies and procedures. So your vote this evening will not change the way growth management allocations occur. The current policies and procedures are still in effect and we will come back to the council once the CHC has a recommendation on how it feels that the growth management ordinance policies and procedures should be changed to meet the direction of the HAP in terms of aligning that with housing policy.
And if I could follow up, that, that was the concern by, by changing the, the priorities around for the CHC at this, at this point, because we are, I think we're getting close to having the GMO and the IHO in place and the longer we don't have those adjusted, if you will, then we're, we're kind of at a disadvantage as development occurs. So we want to make sure that the GMO and the IHO reflect the, the best of what the HAP has to offer. And I think by allowing the, the CHC to continue that work until that's completed, not take anything away from the ADUs, that's a very important piece as well. I think that's, that's why I felt that comment needed to be made, with all due respect.
Just, just to add on ADUs, just briefly, I just, it's such low hanging fruit, people keep saying that over and over, I don't know why we're even, I think we should just move forward with that. So I echo that whether it's in the box or out of the box, let's get those boxes built. I mean, we need rentals, we need people that are able to, to get a rental in this town that are holding up the economic structure of the town, these people that need something to rent. So I think ADUs, and I know it's hard because, you know, some people say, oh, they're going to turn into vacation rentals, but they're a great thing to do, especially if you're building from the ground up, just build an ADU on the property and hopefully you'll rent it out to somebody. That's the purpose of this whole thing, is to use our land well because we all know it's getting more limited and, and we're trying as a city to show up. So I really appreciate the work and I hope that in March we get those, I will get the numbers directly from the building planning director, I, I appreciate that, I'm glad to get them and I'm also glad to talk more about the complexities of the IHO you're referring to. Because as it is now, we have 15% and I don't know, would that be, would it be possible to do 30? I mean, have you heard of cities doing that? In your experience, you come from Santa Rosa, so-
I have not, 15 is pretty typical and I think we can look at a higher percentage. I think 30%, given the current available allocations annually or over a three-year period, make that very, very challenging economically.
Okay, well, thank you for your work and I can support going forward, I'm just excited. Yeah, oh, go ahead.
I'd like to offer a resolution of the City Council of the City of Healdsburg adopting a revised housing action plan and rescinding resolution number 76-2016.
Would you like to include the changes that Councilmember Gold included in?
With those, with the changes the staff is going to work on.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Nyocas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hagley?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
Okay, so, thank you, that's the end of all business and now we move to new business.
Can I make an additional motion? I think what I'm hearing is from both Councilmember Hagley and myself, that perhaps we could, one of, one of the things we could do without overburdening or rearranging the, the GMO policies and procedures, the, or the IHO discussions, is to perhaps submit to the, to the CHC that they, A, number one, that they, the help idea that Councilmember Hagley had suggested and B, some, some direction of aggression to prioritize the ADU discussion.
Okay, so procedurally, we just voted for the, for the, so I'm, I'm totally, I like it free flow myself, I like idea exchange, I'm just making sure that we know that, so what you're suggesting is something I'd have to defer to, because it sounds like they're nervous, they're looking nervous over there, I just want to make sure I'm not, I'm not, so, we just voted and now you're suggesting you wanted to add something?
I'm not, I'm not changing that, I'm suggesting that we, one of the, one of the items was about the work plan itself and so I, I, I'm, I'm hearing some, some agreement on, on, you know, maybe, I guess I'm throwing some suggestions out about what to do to-
What I would say, what I would say no matter what is that we have, you're going to be there for the Community Housing Committee meetings, I mean, that's your task, you're, you're our assigned person, so, I mean, that's coming out right now, you took notes on what was said, so what's different than that to give her that feedback? You wanted something in the HAP that actually reflected silent second?
Nothing about the HAP.
So if I may interject, I, I, my understanding is you would like to re-shuffle the priorities of the CHC, is that my understanding?
Yeah.
If that, if that is the case, if that is the case, we would have to come back, that's not what's on the agenda tonight?
I follow you.
We'd have to come back and reprioritize their work, their work, their work.
Councilmember Nyocas, you know, based on what the city manager and the senior planner have talked about, I, I think that, and also Vice Mayor Hagley, I, I think I have to take back my, my thinking of, of reshuffling that just because of, I, I didn't understand that those things were so closely related to what we just approved and that getting those in place is, is really important. And then I think, you know, after that, the ADUs, but what I was talking about was if you look at the list of them, I don't, it's already under the table, I think the ADUs was at the very bottom and there were some other things about affordable housing, looking for other sources of funding was kind of after the, after the IHO and the, and the inclusion, the IHO and the GMO policies and procedures, having the ADUs on that and that would be something I'd be up for discussing at a future time or maybe at our goal session or something like that.
Yeah, so you'd have the goal session also, we come back with the, hopefully very soon with the GMO and IHO, probably together, you can direct staff to re-prioritize what the CHC is doing at that point.
City manager, when can we expect as a council to hear back from our Community Housing Committee? Because part of what's kind of unclear is just trying to figure out what's going on in the next two months.
So, the GMO discussion is a very complicated discussion, I must say, and it's going to take time because there are, there's going to come a point in time where the CHC is going to make a recommendation on the GMO and the IHO, it's going to come back to council and you as a council have to determine if you, if you like it, if you want to make changes to it or whatnot. I, I would guess it's going to take probably at least two more meetings, I'm looking at Ms. Krantz, before, of the CHC, before we come back to council with a GMO and an IHO resolution, would you agree with that?
I would say we would be able to come back with the GMO probably before the IHO actually, and we can talk more about that, but yes, at least two more meetings for the GMO.
Meet once a month?
Once a month.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to kind of follow up on, yeah, I talked about the shuffling, but I'm, I'm fine with how it is now. But the second part related to the silent second, I would like council support, if that's okay, just for the staff to explore, we had one back in the day and I'd like to have it updated, have them just do a quick review on a silent second program that works for Healdsburg and then maybe they can bring something back to us, because I would like to, like I said, we can figure out the funding later, but if, the sooner we can get these programs in place, even if there's a dollar in that account, I think it's, it's, there's, there's some uses that we could have for that, so I would like to-
So is the silent second idea something that the committee has discussed at all?
I don't believe the committee's discussed, silent second programs are not uncommon and so the, the challenge would be finding capacity for staff to take a look at that and come back to council, something, there's an item later on tonight on the agenda, which we're looking for additional resources to help with that, so that's something that staff can definitely do and probably more appropriate for staff to come up with that and then present that either to the CHC or come back directly to council.
So if it's a staff project, then should it be deferred until goal setting?
We could, I'm hoping that we could kind of get a jumpstart on that, is, was my thinking. It, it's basically reviving a program that was there before, fine tuning it, so I'm just looking for ways that we can, you know, do what we can to help people today on things that aren't necessarily reliant upon future development.
Okay, and so what I'm hearing is this council wants to talk about housing more and I'm wondering when we have another agendaized, I mean, when are we going to talk again about housing? We can definitely wait for the Community Housing Committee to come back and update us, but do we have any agenda items in the next?
Let me go back and take a look at future agenda items and get back to council on that.
Okay, because it sounds like we have some ideas and I don't think it's appropriate now for us to be directing staff to do things without having the conversation in a more agendaized fashion, is that okay?
Absolutely.
I think that's a great, I think that's a really-
Okay, so we can, yeah, thank you. And thanks for caring about being creative and I really appreciate it, I think it's important, it's a complex issue. And again, Planner Krantz, thank you so much for taking on the task and working with our staff and bringing your knowledge from Santa Rosa, I think that's where you're from, right, or part of your career. And it's a dear topic for us in the city and I know our citizens are counting on us to create more and so just thank you so much for your work to, to gel us and help us move forward to get workforce housing. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda and it's new business and it's an approval of an inclusionary housing agreement for the Farmstand subdivision 979 and 1069 Grove Street. And we will be adopting a resolution to approve an inclusionary housing agreement or not, but that's, it's an adoption of a resolution, so.
Excuse me, Mayor, through the course of my business, I've received income from one of the owners of Farmstand LLC on unrelated property in the past 12 months, so per FPPC rules, I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Hagley.
Shout.
Yep, we will, thank you. So this will be presented by Planner Krantz, all right, welcome again. Thank you for helping us get through our agenda and give us good information. All right, so we're good? Okay, so we're beginning right now.
Okay, Madam Mayor and members of the council, as indicated, this is an inclusionary housing agreement for the Farmstand subdivision. Recommended action before the council this evening is to adopt a resolution approving an inclusionary housing agreement between the City of Healdsburg and the Farmstand project for four affordable inclusionary rental units as part of the Farmstand subdivision, which is located at 979 and 1069 Grove Street. So the Farmstand subdivision is an approved subdivision, it includes 29 units, tentative map was recommended for approval by the city's planning commission in November of 2015 and approved by the city council in March of 2016. Final map was approved by the council just several months ago in October of 2017, so the project approvals are mostly complete for this project. So tonight's action in particular is approval of the inclusionary housing agreement, which will implement the project's affordable housing obligation through the inclusionary housing ordinance. And this approval would fulfill one of the project conditions of approval for this project. So the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, as we just discussed, requires 15% of total project units be affordable to lower-income households. This project will provide four rental units on the project site, three of those would be affordable to low-income households, one to a moderate-income household. And the configuration of these units would be, two of the units would be in a duplex and there would be two single-family dwellings as well on the project site. Four affordable units would be built before the 18th market rate unit will be permitted, which is in concurrence and meeting the city's inclusionary housing ordinance's concurrency requirement. The inclusionary housing agreement also restricts the occupancy and rents to qualified households, low and moderate-income households for a period of 55 years. So this is a site plan for the Farmstand subdivision. So the yellow highlighted parcels indicate the location of the affordable units on this site. Grove Street is to the bottom, it's a little bit hard to read, but that is Grove Street right above the title Affordable Housing Site, so you can see that one of the sites is at the corner of Grove Street and a new street, that is the location of the duplex unit and the other two highlighted parcels would contain single-family affordable units. So again, the recommended action this evening is to adopt a resolution approving the inclusionary housing agreement between the city and Farmstand.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Yeah, okay, Counselor Nyocas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I assume that the, first of all, that the, so, so 0.15 times 29 is 4.35, the, the 0.35 is going to be a new fee?
That's correct.
And that's accounted for separately? How, it's just?
It would, it would be collected before the first certificate of occupancy, I believe, or first issuance of a permit. I'll have to look back on that, but yes, that is part of the project approval.
Gotcha, okay. And then can, I don't know, maybe if you could, or the applicants can explain perhaps why this particular configuration of units in, in this particular map arrangement?
Yes, I would call on the applicant to-
May we see the map, please, the whole time? So we can keep visual learning going here, because it's kind of hard, okay? And you can't make that bigger, huh? Just pinch it and make it bigger.
So management of the rental units, will that be Burbank?
No, it will not, I will allow the applicant to answer that question as well.
Okay, so we probably want to bring the applicant up front to answer some of the questions, so, because I have questions too about the rental aspect, thank you, welcome, thanks for coming.
Alan Cohen, 205 Center Street, Mayor Mansell and council members pleased to be here tonight. to be here tonight. I have a few comments, of course will be available to answer questions. Eric Drew, one of the principals of the Farmstand LLC is also here tonight, he can respond to questions. So the agreement in front of you tonight is, was consistent with the project as submitted to the planning commission and, and the city council, uh, and with the conditions of approval. As you probably recall, this is going to be a lot sale subdivision, so homes will not be built, but lots will be developed and then sold, like the Greens project where individuals can build, uh, custom homes, or small spec builders could buy a lot and build a house. There were twenty-eight new lots in this thirty-lot subdivision, there's one house that remains and one house that was torn down. So, um, that's the basis for the fifteen percent. The location of the, um, the duplexes on Lot Seven, which is that lot right on Grove Street, the, all the lots that front on Grove Street are mixed-use zoning, part of the Grove Street mixed-use category, they allow for the duplexes, the single-family, the remainder of the lots are R-one, six thousand, single-family lots, which only allow for single-family homes. We met with staff when we were developing this, um, affordable housing agreement or talking about the, the terms and conditions, and what we initially provided or suggested was, uh, for concurrency, the twenty-eight new lots kind of nicely break up into quarters, seven lots per quarter, fourteen for the first half, twenty-eight total. And what we had originally proposed was that we build, um, that the inclusionary unit be done before you hit the midpoint of each quarter. So you'd, you'd hit, uh, one, essentially to keep concurrency, and this is a little bit hard to follow with words, I've actually got a bar chart here, I'll pass out if, if that would be helpful. Since the duplex was intended to be the first unit, we had proposed that that be done before, um, the midpoint of the first half, and then the third and the fourth between the midpoint of the third quarter and the fourth quarter. Staff, um, said, you know, it would be nice if you could slide that schedule forward and do those units closer to the beginning of the project. So, uh, that was agreed to. The duplex now is required, if you've looked at the details of the agreement, to be done before the fifth unit is permitted. And then the third unit has to be done before the twelfth, I believe, and then the, the fourth between the eighteenth. So basically, the, the first half of the project inclusionary requirement will be done before, um, the mid, you know, well, well towards the front. The fact is that we actually do not, in, uh, the applicant does not intend to wait for those timeframes, he's going to try and accelerate this as much as possible. Um, I realize this is not design review, but we have been working on the duplex design. This is it. Uh, on the lot number seven, in addition to the duplex, there'll be a small office on the front. Uh, we intend to submit this in the next couple of weeks for design review, try and get a permit this year and start building this year. Um, so there's a very good chance, I would say, that that duplex will be done before any market-rate homes are built. In terms of the management, um, part of what we submitted to the city, and I believe it's in your packet, is the management program. So there's a housing, we actually talked with Burbank, we talked with Eden about doing it, and none of them were interested in doing it. It's too small and many of them only do their own projects. Uh, we did find a company called Housing Compliance Services that does the compliance part of it, so they will be a consultant that would screen all the applicants, they would do the annual evaluation every year, you've got to, um, get financials from your tenants, there's a, a certain, um, they, they can usually go twenty percent, there's a grace period over the required, uh, income ranges, but if they start making more money and exceed that, they've got to leave and you replace them with someone that's in that income range. So management would be local with a compliance company, doing all the annual audits and maintaining all the records and, and screening all the applicants. That kind of is a short summary of what the intent is and be happy to respond to questions.
So just as a, as an understanding of the process, I have never encountered where we have inclusionary housing that is a rental. Is, is that true in this city? Do we have inclusionary rental housing in a subdivision?
It can be either rental.
Excuse me. Is anyone, do you know of a, you're shaking, you're, what is?
Yeah, I'm, I'm part of the Parkland Farms Development, there was Canyon Run and, um, I think a few in Quarry Ridge as well, um, so yeah, it's been, it's been done.
Okay, and then the other question I had, um, had to do with the applicant. So Farmstand is a LLC, I have no idea who that is, but since you're standing there, you're representing an applicant, so you're not Farmstand LLC, you're just representing them?
I'm, I'm the project architect, and when you have a subdivision without homes, there's not a lot of architecture, but I, I helped with the planning and the processing and actually would be designing the affordable units.
So, okay, and then, um, as far as the management, then you're just going to do that locally, you're not sure exactly, but you have this new idea of, may I see that again, of actually putting a, you probably made that by hand, didn't you? Um, so you have a, okay, so essentially you're wanting, this is Grove Street and you're going to put this, and then there's Lot Seven, there's that, that much space between those two, that's obviously.
That's all Lot Seven. If you look at the, uh, site plan, you can see it's quite a deep lot.
So Grove's right here, and, okay, I'm just trying to understand how you're going to lay this out, okay? Um, all right, I'm going to let you.
And part of the idea with, with, um, the Grove Street mixed-use lots was to have the opportunity to create, um, mixed-use, obviously, but to reinforce what's happened on Grove Street historically. There, there used to be a few more commercial operations, there was that nursery, there's a lot of bigger, the, uh, uh, there's Bed and Breakfast out there, but some big homes, and then there's the alley behind it. So the idea was you'd have potentially a commercial building towards the front and maybe on the backside garage with carriage house units, that sort of thing, but the opportunity for both residential and commercial. So since, uh, this parcel will be retained and managed for at least fifty-five years with the affordable housing, um, the idea is also to create a small office to generate a little bit of income to help that pretty significant subsidy that goes towards maintaining the, the affordable rental rates for the moderate and low-income. If you look at all three or four of those units, I believe the, and I can pass this out, the, the annual subsidy is, is north of about sixty thousand dollars, um, to subsidize the, the difference between what it costs to build those and then the rental income that comes in.
So to clarify again, this office is your, is, is the, is the applicant's office to do what they want with?
They'll be renting it out.
Renting it out for office space, okay. Sorry, I'm just trying to get my, and so that's another generator of, of revenue to subsidize what you're doing with that and the other two lots that eventually after the eighteenth market.
That's right.
Sale you'll have built, okay, I'm just trying to get, okay. Um, and are there any other questions? Here? Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
So, um, so I, I understand now the, the, why the duplex on the mixed-use segment. Is there any, so, that's actually an intriguing design. Um, it, it, it kind of answers a lot of, hits a lot of, of notes, I mean, in terms of offering some kind of, almost like a live-work kind of an arrangement, you know, I mean, you could even see, I, see how someone living here could work there, that kind of idea. Why not just take that, that model and do it for the other two, I guess, Lots Eight and Nine, those, those two adjacent mixed-use lots?
Part of the idea, I think, was to create some variety.
Yeah.
Um, and not preclude other live-work kind of owner-occupy type uses on the other Grove Street lots.
Right. Okay, I, I hear you, I, I, where I'm going with this is, is, you know, I'm referring back to the, to the state of the county, where, you know, look, we've got, really got to step up. Um, you, you, so you're doing a nice job of, of, of adhering to the letter of the law, and I appreciate that. Um, I'm just looking at, hmm, how could we be flexible here? If you're doing two, two units here, why not, you could actually have six total units, and, so exceeding the letter of the law, I understand, but it can still be achieved? And what do we, what's the give and take on that, uh, with a plan like that? So your, your, your response would be, well, you're give, you're, you're, you're giving that, that kind of interspersed quality, which I value, I get that, um, at, at the expense of the two, but of the additional two. I, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking at this and saying, what, um, you know, if, if, if you could, it could, if you could sharpen your pencil to say, you know, adding, what are the ways like, that you could do that would still pencil out and yet add more units, yet still adhere to this?
I don't think that they're actually going to be building on all the lots, I think the lots will be sold to the owner builders and they'll decide what to put on it.
Well, I have a comment on that if we're going to start free flow, but you.
I don't think that we're contemplating design here. What we're contemplating here today is whether or not this project meets the inclusionary housing requirement as required by the city of Healdsburg. I don't think it's our charge to say whether this lot or that lot, you know, I mean, I thought it was pretty clear that the senior planner said that this meets the, the inclusionary housing requirement, and the timeframe of when these were to be built follows that also, and it meets all the zoning requirements. And so I remember doing this, going over this item when we were, had a tentative map, and we started talking about everything under the, under the sun. And so I just want to throw it out there that I think we should, we should stay, um, I don't know, how should I say, professional on this and just look at what we're supposed to talk about today.
Yeah, we've been talking all night about housing though, so you can't help but want to be a little creative and, and try to be leaders up here for vision. So I think it's okay to ask questions, I support you want to stay professional, I guess I want to stay like on task, we're trying to get more housing. So I, I understand what you're saying and I support what you're saying if you want to just wrap it up, but I think it's really important for someone that is standing at the podium as representing an applicant, so smart as you are, you know this area, so I think it's kind of cool to have the experience to, to ask a few questions and in a polite, civil way, I think it's a good thing. So I would argue it's healthy to ask questions about design, and this is new information tonight, so I think it's a good thing to ask because it's, it is clever and it's definitely predictable coming from an architect. Um, Alan Cohen, thank you, I, I appreciate that, but I think it's a good thing to ask. So again, I feel handcuffed every time we talk about this project, the Farmstand, because I don't know why we can't ask questions, but I, I'm going to, I'm going to stick to the, to the, to the, to the approval of this inclusionary housing agreement, but I do think it's healthy to ask questions. Okay, so, um, I'd like to offer a resolution of the city council.
I think we have to open it up to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was getting there, I was just going with the questions. Okay, so please open to the public, yes, and if that's okay, thank you.
If there's more questions, I'd be happy to respond.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so now I'm going to open it to the public, are there any comments from the public about this?
I'm a, I'm on this, a community housing committee, and I've been on it for two and a half years, I wanted to give some perspective on this. I've been on two different committees, and, um, I have some comments about this housing, or inclusionary housing agreement. The, um, the owners of this twenty-eight unit project, they're meeting the required minimum for inclusionary housing, which is fifteen percent. But I think everybody should know that our committee currently right now is, is presently reviewing the whole ordinance. There's been initial discussion of looking at twenty percent potentially, this is discussion at this point. So my concern here, and part frustration, but part of it is, can the city council potentially defer any action on this agreement until we have a final version of the inclusionary housing ordinance? Sounded like that might not be possible from what I heard earlier, but I'm bringing this up because it's very important. This project has gotten involved several times in the midst of our discussions, and I want to go over that because it's very important to see this perspective here. There could have been a better outcome if this Farmstead had attempted to meet some or many of the goals in the city's approved HAP in July of two thousand sixteen. I understand it was brought up that they received their tentative map in March of two thousand sixteen, which was four months prior. Could the city staff have approached them once this, the July HAP was approved and requested them to review their project in light of this change in the city's housing goals? I think this is something to ponder. This project meets none of the five objectives of the HAP, except for local preference and inclusionary housing, they have not met any of the others' priority or supporting recommendations in the HAP. I consider historically, and this is my perspective only, that this project is an anomaly to the city's housing goals. It's a dinosaur, it's a vestige of what we don't want to see in the future happening in Healdsburg. Land is too precious, this is nine acres. This is nine acres and twenty-eight homes, we are seeing three homes to the acre, three homes to the acre, I repeat. This project could have had ten to fifteen units per acre, perhaps providing ninety to one hundred and thirty-five units. It could have met some of the HAP housing objectives that we passed in July of two thousand sixteen. There might have been a planned unit development, there could have been cottage court, there could have been small lot development or condos. So what do we have now? We have twenty-four market-rate home lots possibly selling, I don't know, but from four hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand, with resulting home values likely over one million dollars a home. Will this project help our local residents or employees in their search for housing? These developers had time to do the right thing, they attended our CHC meetings frequently in the spring of two thousand sixteen, and they saw what our committee was recommending, which you have approved tonight. Two of the owners are also long-term planning commissioners.
Bruce, did you send this to us? Can you give us a copy of this, because your time is, is past.
Okay, I'll just finish, just.
Okay, thirty seconds.
So they followed the process and its legality, but I think they missed the spirit of what the city has been attempting to do with housing. And in closing, they could have made a profit and done the right thing by helping the city with its housing plan and meeting the HAP objectives. So again, this goes back to the inclusionary housing goals and what we're looking at and what this process has been for the last two and a half years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Looks like public comment is over, now you can make your motion if you want. Are there any comments before the motion from any of the other council members? Because I just want to make sure we're making this process open and transparent. Do you have anything else to add, Counselor? Are you fine? Okay.
Before you wrap it up, I would concur with everything it said, I think that this is just, this is a gift today to have this in front of us because before we vote on this, because, um, it's exactly what we don't want to do, which is, is continue to do single-family homes and not address the density that we need, and also to look at mixed-use as mixed income. And, um, so I, I would concur that, you know, we need to, to see this as a time in our journey, um, that, you know, we can say this is satisfying or inclusionary, but, um, with these lots being opened up, just as the Greens were, my in-laws were the first ones to build up there, and everybody built what they wanted, and there's, I know we have design review guidelines, but I just wanted on record that I'm concerned about the very things that were expressed, that we don't, we're not getting the best that we can from local people that are the applicants, that know that this is something we're struggling with, and so I, I want that on record, that I have reservations about supporting a project after all the journey that we've been on with trying to get more density and housing for people that are workers. So though we're meeting the dead, or we're meeting the guidelines and following the rules, I would love to have seen more imagination and more elegance in this, because this is elegance, being able to make a lot like that, that's elegant. So, um, I'll, I'll now surrender my comments to whatever you're going to do, Counselor Gold.
I'll offer a resolution of the city council, the city of Healdsburg approving an inclusionary housing agreement between the city and Farmstand Project LLC for property located at nine seven-nine and one thousand seventy-nine Grove Street and authorizing execution and recordation of the agreement.
I'll second it.
Counselor Gold?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Counselor Malayokas?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
No.
All right, so thank you for that. That was new business, and now we have another item, and welcome back Vice Mayor Haley. So item B is authorizing positions, and it's a listing update, actually, from, I believe, our...
We're gonna tag team, I'll start.
Okay, great, thank you.
And since the magic label finished, that works. So the action in front of yous tonight is adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 1718 budget for staffing changes, and adopt a resolution rescinding resolution 126-2017, and reestablish the authorized position listings. So just, we have background, back in December, we brought a facilitator, took all the department heads offsite, and talked about ways we, as an organization, can be more efficient and more effective in delivering services to our community. Part of that discussion, from that discussion came the following information, which we're gonna ask counsel to contemplate tonight. Also as way of background, back in 2015, the city established a community housing director position. It was Community Housing and Development was the title. At the same time, we had an administrative services director was reassigned, those responsibilities were reassigned to the assistant city manager. I think that's an important, as far as background. What the proposed changes are in the city manager's office are to unfund the community housing and development director position and upgrade the housing analyst position to a housing administrator. We feel that the housing analyst position, upgrading that to a housing administrator will allow us to recruit somebody who has the skills, score requirements to address our housing challenges in the community. The other piece of that, from the housing and development director position, they also had development that would not be part of the housing administrator position, so we would take that part off. Another change would be to reinstitute the administrative services department director, adding administrative services director, adding an HR manager, adding an IT systems engineer specialist, and extend, upgrading the current IS technician position. Little more information on housing, so again, eliminating the community housing and development director, and upgrading the senior, the housing analyst to housing administrator, as I mentioned before, that would allow that position to work at a higher level, and they would not be looking at economic development as part of their charge. And again, I think that, that position would be able to work with the CHC, all housing-related matters, and I know there continues to be challenges with homelessness in this community and programs which the city works with, are partners, and this position would also be able to address those, those challenges and work on those programs as well. This position would also report to the city manager's office and in all likelihood directly to the assistant city manager. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant City Manager Iplete, and she can talk about admin services and what those responsibilities would be.
Thank you very much. Like David mentioned, what's proposed is to add an admin services director. The admin services director would oversee finance, utility billing, fleet maintenance, building maintenance, HR, payroll, and IT primarily. In reality, it is not possible for one person to serve as the administrative services director and perform the responsibilities of the assistant city manager proficiently. And what this will do is also, it'll create opportunities to enhance the internal service delivery and ensure proper oversight of the city's finances. We all know how very important that is. Also, what's proposed is to add an HR manager. Currently, it's technically a division of one with oversight of the assistant city manager. With the city's size and complexity, it really does lend itself to a more resource division. I happen to know the resources that Windsor has, and they have about 100 full-time employees, and they actually have an HR division of four, and that even includes an HR director. So right now, we've got a specialist with oversight from the, from the assistant, and we really need this manager to really take the lead on employee engagement, that workforce development, a lot of what you guys heard about last, last Friday, the succession planning, and then, of course, the compliance with the federal and state employment laws and regulations. Right now, our specialist is really spread too thin. And information technology. In December, I brought to you a contract for Portola Systems. They were to assist us with operations, and I also told you that I'd be looking at our current delivery of services. In October, the city hired Laura Trudennick as the interim information systems manager to assess the overall performance of that division. In her opinion, and staff agrees, the city lacks the resources to address the city's IS needs. She recommended upgrading the current IS network technician and adding an additional senior position. A lot of what Laura did was, besides look and see how the current IS division was performing, she met with every department. She heard their frustrations, she heard their needs. This was also brought up in the retreat, the offsite retreat with the department heads. The proposed changes will reduce the city's reliance on the outside IT consultant for operations, saving the city approximately $85,000 per year in consulting costs. That's for that day-to-day operations that currently Portola is performing. After, after these, after the new senior position is, is added and the current position upgraded, we will, we will be properly resourced for those day-to-day operations. And, but, but just keep in mind, because staff will still need to utilize those outside firms for that project-based work. Fiscal impact, the administrative services director and HR manager and IT possession positions are all central service positions, and therefore are allocated citywide, where all funds share in the cost of a percent to whole depending on the position. For instance, HR manager is allocated, like, by FTE, where IT is allocated by service fees. The annual impact citywide of the proposed changes is about 301,000, but only 26,000 for the remainder of the current year. I have to take into consideration that there's gonna be a recruitment period, these new positions, the odds of them, you know, being on board even before the 1st of June is slim. The general fund portion is 28,000 for the year, or 2,500 for the current fiscal year. Like David said, the recommended actions, it's adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 1718 budget for staffing changes, and adopt a resolution rescinding resolution 126-2017, and reestablishing the authorized positions listing. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you so much. Do you have more to add, city manager? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Are there any questions on the dais regarding these changes or anything you need clarification on? Okay, Counselor Malayokas?
Quick question about the HR. I guess what, I'm, I'm, now that I'm looking at the authorized positions, the current HR role is served by administrative specialist, is that what?
It's, it's, we call it an HR specialist.
HR specialist?
Yes. I mean, and she, at this point, she's focusing on recruitments and just doing what is, what has to be done. There's no, there's no succession planning, there's no workforce development. I'm concerned about compliance with some of the federal and state laws, and the HR manager will be able to do that, plus be proactive, and that's what scares me now. We've got a large number of staff, they're all coming to retirement date, and we really need to be looking at that and planning for that. And plus, what the department heads brought up at the retreat is workforce development. We've got, our, our, our second tier pension plan means that we have a lot of new, young people coming to the city, and that's, that's good, that's great energy, but what they need, they need training. And so they need citywide training, they need, there's just that development piece and the onboarding. I, I was talking to one of our newer employees that came from the Seattle area, and we were talking about onboarding. Every, every employee should be going through an onboarding process to review policies, just how government works, and we're lacking in that area. So for us to be fully resourced, we need to properly train our staff.
So the current specialist, HR specialist would continue with her role?
It's primarily recruiting, correct. It's, I mean, she, she does some of the compliance, but I need, I need that higher level.
Gotcha.
And yeah, it's recruiting is what she primarily concentrates on.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's...
Yeah, I just wanted to, with, tonight, after discussing everything about where we're going with, it seemed like a housing motif tonight, I really appreciate that position. I just wanted to comment on that, if we're just gonna jump to a resolution here and vote for this, because I, I know, I just, I'm just bringing up the question, just a second, I'm getting there. So my, I guess my question is, when you move into the new building, this new configuration, does it feel like there's gonna be enough off? I mean, you've been overseeing that as well, so I just wondered how this all applies to the housing of these people.
Upstairs, upstairs is essentially the finance, HR, payroll area and utility billing. There's three offices, and what, what is proposed is one, because, because I truly believe that the office space goes to functionality, right? And when it comes to payroll and HR, that means they get offices, because it's, again, it's confidentiality, it's protecting, protecting that privacy of the employee. So, so there's, there's planned offices for the payroll and HR staff, and, and there's, there's definitely desks planned for each, each staff member, yes.
All right, so that was my question. Since we're moving into a new place, and you're talking about all these retirements, it's like, all right, so I would love to, oh, question, yes, yes, sorry.
A couple of questions. We're, I, I look at Healdsburg as, we're kinda getting to the point where we're kinda hitting on all cylinders. So in terms of looking forward, are we anticipating quite a bit more? Are we kind of, this is kind of where we're at with our staffing and the reorganization? And then the second question, we kinda talked about it outside, was related to pensions and taking on new obligations. And, you know, what happens when, you know, the market turns and it's not quite as busy? So if you could just kind of talk on that a little bit, thank you.
So the pension piece, we're gonna bring John Bartel back in, I believe in March or April to address pensions.
March 5.
On March. And I think the good news, bad news, if you will, is a lot of our new employees that are coming on are pepper employees, I mean, they're new to the system, so they're, they don't have the same pension benefits, and the cost for those employees isn't, isn't what it is for some other existing employees. And we bring laterals, and laterals are folks that are working in other agencies who currently have PERS. Council, I believe in 2012, adopted a second tier, a third tier, I guess, whatever you wanna call it, and they have much, much less in far as benefits goes, which is much, much more economical for the city to bring those folks on. That's the, I think that's, that answers the PERS question. And again, Mr. Bartel can speak to that more, and the first question you had was...
Related to, well, not necessarily this is it, because we're clearly, things change, but just in terms of, I, I feel like we've done a lot of patchwork and catching up, we've got a lot of topics.
So I think one, one of the things which we talked about, I've, I've been meeting with each individual department over the past several months to talk about resources, are they properly resourced? And there, there are some additional proposals which council will see during the budget process. What I wanted to do was work with Assistant City Manager Iplete and address some of the critical needs we need to, we need to deal with immediately, or actually probably could have dealt with, you know, sooner than this, if possible. But there's, are other needs in public works, in electric, and may, might be some more in administration, which council will be able to evaluate as we, as we present those during, during the budget process.
And again, just clarifying, the housing administrator position, do you think we'll have more interest because you elevated it over the housing analyst position that we were flying? Because we were flying that for a while.
We had a hard time filling that position. I think we were looking, and we also wanted someone to, now, with assuming council's supportive of this, we really need someone to work more at senior level, senior planner level, which this will be equal to. We need this person, as we have Lisa who I think might have gone home, but we have Lisa working part-time, right? She's, she, she, she's, she's not here for the long haul, as much as I'd love to keep her, she's retired. So we need to have somebody who works at her level full-time, and so that's what this position would allow us to do. And just focus on housing, home services, homeless services and things like that, and we're taking the economic development or development piece of that off of that, that person's plate.
Thank you. All right, now I'd love, unless there's a question, I'd love to open this to the public, if anyone has any comments. No comments, it looks like, no one's standing up. Okay, so back to the table here. Does anyone have any comments before they offer a resolution? Or, there's two different resolutions, just to clarify. You probably saw that. One is to adopt, I meant to amend the budget for staffing changes, and then the second one is to rescind a resolution and reestablish the authorized positions listed. So we need two resolutions, but I'm just...
If there's no further comment, I will offer a resolution of the City Council, the City of Healdsburg, rescinding resolution number 38-2017, and reestablishing the list of authorized positions.
Second.
Counselor McGold?
Yes.
Counselor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Counselor Member Malayokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hegley?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
Okay, someone...
I would further offer a resolution of the City Council of the City of Healdsburg, amending the fiscal year 201718 budget.
Second.
Counselor McGold?
Yes.
Counselor McCaffrey? Counselor Malayokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hegley?
Yes.
Mayor Mansell?
That's business there. So new business, check, check, okay. So we have some written communications from the Planning and Building Director, DeRosa. I don't know if any of you had a chance to listen to that or read, but there was discussion about the design review guidelines. It was really good, actually, listening to that one, and no actions required, but just bringing it up, and then also had some information from our Parks and Rec Commission actions. Before we adjourn, or before I adjourn this meeting, I just wanna clarify what's next. So our next agenda...
Our next agenda, the two items which will probably create the most interest will be adopting, hopefully adopting, the design guidelines, and then having the hotel discussion, hotel CUP discussion back on the agenda. Those are the two items.
Okay, so we're calling it the CUP Hotel Discussion?
I'm not sure what the agenda item will be called at this point, but that's, that's what the discussion will be, Rob.
Okay. And there were some other items that were brought up, and do we all just feel comfortable staying with that for this next meeting, or do you, do you have an interest in talking about any other agenda items coming up? Okay, all right. Okay, well then, I will adjourn the meeting, thank you.